We are here talking today on Bad Faith Podcast with John Pelts, an LA-based reporter who writes and edits for Knock LA, who was the first outlet to post audio from the now infamous city council meeting that was recorded. Welcome to the show, John.
Thank you so much for having me.
And we're also joined by Rachel Reyes, an LA podcaster. And Rachel, I didn't ask you, you know, how you would prefer to be introduced before we got started here today?
Yeah, a community organizer in Los Angeles, native Angelino. That all works for me.
Okay, perfect. I'm glad you're here. John was really insistent that you'd be a wonderful contribution to this podcast. So I'm glad to have you both here today. So John, you were just telling me a little bit of the detail in the backstory about how your outlet or the outlet for which you write and edit came to be the first to publish the secretively recorded tapes that have now put a lot of pressure on certain LA city council members to resign. Can you tell the audience a little bit more about how this story came to pass?
Yeah, so someone who, you know, nobody knows the identity of had posted this fairly cryptic post on Reddit a few weeks before people sort of got their hands, or at least people in my orbit, sort of got their hands on the audio. And about two weeks after that post, which had some criticisms of the LA Fed, had some comments about being a supporter of Caruso. The message also seems like it may have been cut and paste from an email from somewhere else and put on Reddit. It's all very, it's not all really founded yet. And then someone else on Twitter posted a link to that Reddit thread with all this audio. It's about, it's, you know, I guess five or six tapes. Someone posted on Reddit and then, yeah, the Twitter person posted a link to that. And they tagged a reporter from the LA Times. They tagged one of the campaigns running for office in the city, the Hugo Soto Martinez campaign, and a few other people. And I think that's when people started to really dig into the tapes to find it. And that's around the time it was sent. It was sent to me on, that was on Thursday, the tweet. And then it was sent to me about Saturday morning.
So part of the, yeah, go ahead, John.
And so like, yeah, everyone who's posting, you know, or at least reporting on knowledge of these tapes got it the same way. They got it from Reddit posts, which I feel like there's not a lot of attention being paid to, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, it's part of the interesting part of the story is that, you know, in LA, it depends, you know, various states of state, whether or not you're allowed to kind of record one side of a conversation with the other side of the people present, knowing they're being recorded. Of course, there were threatening letters issued to people. LA Times included warning them not to publish the recording lest they be subject to legal action. But you know, the LA Times and other outlets are right to say that it's a foundational principle that in American journalism that is, you know, you cannot be punished rather for publishing newsworthy information. So now we all know about the contents of this. And much of the media coverage has focused, per, you know, the titles racist remarks and leaked audio, have really focused on a number of incendiary, like kind of flagrantly racist remarks made primarily by Nuri Martinez on the tape. And I want to run through those quickly, but I also really want to get to the meat and potatoes of the underlying story, which is this redistricting story. And it's a real story, I think, about the meat and potatoes of the power in the situation, what we really should be tracking here. So first up, I just want to run through for people who haven't somehow, if you've had your head in a hole and not have been following this. This was a conversation with council members, primarily Kevin DeLeon and Nuri Martinez are the stars of this particular tape. There was a moment where Martinez mocked, they were talking about the racial composition of Chinatown and talked about short, little dark people being there, an allusion apparently to Mexican indigenous peoples. Comments about whether or not various council members were with the blacks, alluding to the power struggles between people who control various districts and the assets, the kind of financial assets, profitable assets that exist within them.
All the, you know, folks like with us going, he did call me. He wants to have breakfast with me.
Where's taking him so long?
I haven't, I just said, hey, we need to talk.
Gil supported him from the.
All right, don't worry, I got you. So you'll start seeing them line up.
And a lot of focus came on one other council member's child. Can you walk us through that particular bit of dialogue, Rachel?
Yeah, so Mike Bonin, I actually live in Mike Bonin's district, District 11. It is the wealthiest district in the city of LA. We have 15 council districts and it is the wealthiest. And Mike Bonin and his husband have an adopted son. And the story that Nuri Martinez told took place when Mike Bonin's son was about two years old. So this is like some years ago. This was not a recent story. And Nuri is recounting a story about a Martin Luther King Day Parade, I believe, John, right? Correct? I believe it was MLK. Yes. And Nuri Martinez was on a float with other council members, council members, spouses, also notably Karen Bass, who is one of two people running for mayor currently. And she's telling the story of how Mike Bonin's son is ill behaved, a reminder that he is two.
Right.
In this, at this time. And regardless, she uses really racist remarks referring to Mike Bonin's son, who is black. He's adopted. And she just is going on and on and on. And she tells this story distinctly. I mean, it's still too long and an awful story to be told, but.
It's like black and brown on this float. And then there's this white guy with a little black kid who's misbehaved. The kid is bouncing off the effing walls on the floor, practically tipping it over. There's nothing you can do to control him, but he's a changuito.
Translation, little monkey.
They're raising him like a little white kid, which I was like, this kid needs a beat down. Like, let me, let me take him around the corner and then I'll bring him back.
My, my opinion is that she has told this story many, many times because she has it down pat, just where she's going to insert the racist remarks about his son. She mentions Karen Bass by name. She mentions other council members' wives by name, basically saying and implying that two men cannot raise a child. That's the vibe that I got. So it was racist, but also homophobic at the same time. And yeah, it was just a gross story. Also saying that this two-year-old is going to topple an entire float. Again, it just really like reminds you of how like we talk about black children like they're not children. And it's just very, it was just racist on many levels and inappropriate on many levels.
Specifically, there's a moment where she refers to the child as a monkey for crawling all over the float. There is a critique of, and I think this, I was saying this earlier to John, I think there's a little bit of a critique that gets lost here. And this isn't validating the critique, but I think there's an argument that what she was saying was that she disapproves of a white parenting style. Says if the kid were in her custody, that she could take it around the corner and give it a quick beat down and then it would behave. Yeah, then it would behave better than being raised with these white parents. And it's interesting that you both have brought up now, John, we were talking a little before, the kind of homophobic aspect of this, because I haven't seen that part of it covered very much. Can you talk a little bit more about what else in the tape or what broader context believes you to think that that's an additional tension, in addition to the racial tensions that come out very clearly in this recording?
Yeah, I see also, oh, sorry, go for it, John.
Well.
I was just going to mention about Mitchell Farrell, but I think maybe that's what you're going to talk about.
I was going to talk about, yeah, they, another case, a council member of Mitchell Farrell. They're speaking about redistricting and people are like, there's this sort of argument between council members Sadio and Nuri Martinez, where I think one of the quotes Nuri makes is like, everyone here, Gil's complaining about the districts being unfair or something. And he's like, well, your boy Mitchell Farrell must be, you know, pleased or something. And she's like, well, he's not my boy. And then she says something to the effect of, you know, we're all going to have to eat a little shit here. And then she calls Mitchell Farrell a diva.
I'm good with looking. No offense to both of you, but I do all the work.
Look how hard I worked to not let this be a compare contrast.
I thought you guys were okay. You sound like you guys are okay. Like, fuck, man, you had me fooled. I'm like, oh, yes, yes. We call it the bromance, a COVID-broke bromance. They go on COVID. Yeah, they're like complimenting each other and Mr. This, Mr. That. And I'm like, oh, fuck, I didn't get the memo.
I distinguish the work.
And now we're back to like battling. So I don't understand.
I'm not battling him. Look at how much I fought to keep him out of this.
He's a, he's a teamster. I gotta support him. He's a family.
He's a teamster?
Yeah, that's why this guy that's running from HRE, I already told Susan.
Sometimes you gotta bring people a little closer to try to control them a little bit, like sort of like calm the hell down. He, I get it. He's a, he's a diva.
Which if you, if you've watched interviews of Mitchell Farrell, since these tapes have come out, you know, he has certainly taken offense to it. He definitely did not think that comment was made in any sort of good taste. And then additionally, when they're having the conversation about the Martin Luther King Parade, Kevin DeLeon, who is, you know, since there's been all this blowback, has tried to distance himself from a lot of this racist rhetoric. You know, he's claiming he didn't directly participate. He was just a sort of bystander. He made a comment that the child was like an accessory to my, which I think also feeds into definitely the homophobic sort of tropes there.
Yeah, like I think a Louis Vuitton handbag. It's funny because the first few times I saw this story covered and even we reported it, I wasn't aware that Bonin was gay. And I, you know, that's a criticism that a lot of people make. You know, that's again, not validating the criticism, but a lot of people make of, you know, interracial adoption. People have accused various celebrities, Madonna, Angelina Jolie, et cetera, of having a certain amount of status attached to having a non-white kid or a kid who's a different race themselves. But that definitely is another layer that I'm glad to be made aware of. Additionally, I think there was a moment where Bonin was referred to as a little bitch.
So getting back to Marquise, I told Danny, if you want to cut a deal and if you want to, if you want to make like fucking boss moves, I would go after the airport. He goes, fuck, I know that idea. I said, tell Marquise, go take him from his friend. You also have to leave him alone. Go get the airport from his fucking little brother, that little bitch Bonin.
How many black people?
I go, I go, what is with the Bon, what is with Bonin? I said, Bonin thinks he's fucking black. That guy don't think he's black. He thinks he's black. I go the same thing.
So it's, it's good to see that coming out a little bit more. John, you mentioned before that you think that if more people had listened to the entire recording and understood not just these nuances that we're talking about here, but some of the broader redistricting nuances that we're going to get into in a little bit, that they would have been more upset and been calling more forcefully for action to be taken. Is that right?
Yeah, I think a lot of the initial response was focused on, you know, everyone could sort of come to an agreement from the initial, the initial report for the LA Times really focused on Nuri Martinez's comments about Mike Bonin's child. I think that's sort of the, you know, when people hear that, you know, there's a universal, I think, reaction of disgust. And people could agree that that's sort of a beyond the pale thing. And I think maybe they were, if you were, you know, you follow the reactions of other local politicians on Twitter and you could see that there are some people who thought maybe, in my, in my view, that this would just blow over or that Nuri Martinez may have to resign from being city council president, but perhaps stay on board on city council. And so you would see these initial reactions from politicians. You know, Karen Bass was endorsed by Nuri Martinez for, for the mayoral race. Tracy Park in CD 11 was endorsed by Nuri Martinez. Neither of them came out immediately with any sort of a statement or demand for resignation. And then Karen Bass put out some statement that didn't call for any resignations. And then I think a day after that statement, she put out a second statement that did call for resignations. So I do, I did get the impression that there was a different level of awareness from local politicians and local campaigns of how much information was on these recordings and how language got. And I do think that that definitely comes from, it's perhaps just how media works. Everyone's trying to, you know, break stories first with the information they can put out. So, you know, maybe early articles don't really encompass the entirety of that. But I do think that if, if more of the tape had been reported on and listened to, that there would be a lot more early outrage from people, yeah.
Yeah, well, just before we get onto that, the rest of that tape, sorry, my light just went out. Speaking of cause of resignation, so Martinez did this interesting maneuver where she said she was going to be resigning, but resigning as, resigning from her leadership position, not resigning from the council. Meanwhile, DeLeon has basically said that wasn't me, that's not the real me. Look at my records, you know, my record doesn't reflect that this is the person I am. And seems to be hoping perhaps that nobody will notice if the status quo is maintained. It seems like the only way to force them out of office would be some kind of recall election. What's going on there, Rachel?
Yeah, I mean, Kevin DeLeon is hoping that no one has listened to 100-plus minutes of this tape where he has clearly said many anti-black bigoted things left at things that other people said, right? It's like passive racism is still racism. You're not bullying anybody. But yeah, he's gone on multiple channels at this point to say that he is not resigning. And I think the only path, one of the most viable paths to removing him from office before he is up for reelection in 2024 is a recall. And to ensure that folks have enough votes, I think we need like 31,000 signatures was the math that I saw. 500 folks need to get, like, actually, let me rephrase that. Yes, I think the current math is 31,000 votes are needed to ensure that enough signatures are valid to recall him. So I hope people in his district take that route. I think this man should not be in office. And, you know, Gil Sadio is on his way out in December. I wish he would just resign now and give it up. But we know he's gone in a few weeks. So, you know, he's kind of like the last thing that I'm worried about. But Kevin DeLeon doubling down on how he behaved and his record, what records are, is offensive and gross. And I also don't see enough people talking about how he was also in the running for mayor. At the time that the tapes were recorded, he was a mayoral candidate. And, you know, had he gone on to be the top two and got elected next month, he would have left his district anyway. So it's all, you know, I don't know who his strategist is. He should get a new one. He should resign. It's a very ugly look and it's very embarrassing as a fellow Latinx person in the city to see him double down on his bigotry because he needs to resign.
Well, some people have opined that, you know, these, what is, I think it's like a $225,000 a year salary that city council members get is a pretty significant incentive for folks to stay in office. You know, politics necessarily pay unless there's a degree of corruption. And that's one of the better paying, better paying city council jobs, I imagine, in the country. But speaking of that broader corruption, it does seem like as I start to get into the specifics of what they're talking about with respect to the redistricting scandal, it seems that it might be useful to know some of the background of what's been going on with the Mark Ridley Thomas indictment and corruption scandal. Because it did seem like a lot of, some, some parts of the conversation pertain to what they were going to do if the power shifts in certain ways because of his resignation, what was going to happen to his district, et cetera. Does one of you want to give us a brief gloss about what's been going on there?
Sure. And, and I think it's also important to note that city council, you know, made a motion, maybe I should say this after, but they made a motion the very next day in October 19th, the day after this recording was taken to like start the process of removing Mark Ridley Thomas from his position. But yeah, Mark Ridley Thomas was accused of accepting bribes from someone in the USC. I, I actually don't remember her exact name, but basically to help his son, who Sebastian Ridley Thomas, who has also been accused of sexual harassment, to get a professor job at the school. And in, in the indictment's happening now, I believe that the USC official has already admitted her guilt in the extortion scam. And yeah, they, they removed him from office, from his position pretty quickly. The city controller froze his salary. And you can hear them talking in the recordings about, and this is, you know, to give some background, Mark Ridley Thomas was a county supervisor. He has his name on a lot of buildings in LA and he was sort of seen, I wouldn't say by the left in LA, but he was seen by the broader public as an advocate for homelessness. And you can hear on the recording that Kevin DeLeon and Nuri Martinez are very upset about this perception of him as some sort of folk hero. They say some, you know, some words to the effect of like, oh, what, what, what the, what the F has he done about homelessness? What has he done? And they talk about that quite a bit. And it's sort of malign his, his record, which, and so, and so he is someone who's, you know, incredibly respected and, and South LA. And even after the indictment came out, he had a great deal of supporters who really argued that they wanted him back in his position, that this was an unfair, you know, way to remove him from office, you know, is this innocent upper guilty, all those sorts of things. And I think, you know, Mike Bonin, Marquis Harrison, another council member, you know, they voted against removing him from his position as well. So you could sort of see there's, you know, these alliances forming around Mark Ridley Thomas and Karen Price. And, you know, what they're talking about the tapes, they're trying to take power away from black Angelino officials. So that's a big part of the discussion. And you can also hear on the tapes, the current appointee of CD 10, you know, Mark Ridley Thomas's district is Heather Hutt. And they talk on the tapes about how council member Hutt would be just someone who would help them push their agenda along, which before these tapes came out, you know, I think a broad public perception was that council member Hutt was just someone who was basically okaying a lot of these other city council members' motions, agendas, and didn't really, there's been a lot of criticism of her for not, you know, she's not elected, she was appointed. And there's also, you know, a group mobilized in South LA that they, you know, the same group that supported Mark Ridley Thomas, they argue that she doesn't represent them. So that's a whole other aspect of this too, yeah.
So Mark Ridley Thomas, Marquis, and who's the third, the black person that keeps coming up in the tapes?
Karen Price.
Karen Price.
Yeah.
They're spoken of as though there is a kind of racially driven, all three are black, a racially driven and kind of allegiance that has taken a disproportionate amount of power in the city, given that Latinos are underrepresented, there are more Latinos and the representation is reflected in the city council and beyond. It's difficult because I guess my question to you, the racial, the kind of the racist statements that come out of that indignation aside, is that true? And to what do you attribute that?
I think that part of what was so shocking to me in the like first listening to the tapes and reading part of the transcripts after was this deep, this deep subscription to the idea that like there are black politicians and there are Latinx politicians and they want different things. And even though we live in the same cities, like we are battling. It's this like scarcity mentality. And to me, that feels very dangerous and violent. As someone who grew up here, I went to LA USC schools my whole life. I saw a lot of racial violence. Like I saw that rhetoric borne out in people getting stabbed, shot, beaten up. Like that's what that rhetoric does. It doesn't serve anybody to promote white supremacy at a city council level. And that's all that they were doing. So to me, to hear these brown council members and Ron Herrera, let's not forget him. Ron Herrera, all of these people who ostensibly represent all of LA and workers in the city who are mostly black and brown people, it was very scary language to me because that is like not what our politicians should be doing.
Well, Rachel, some people are going to hear you say, you know, it's white supremacy. You're going to say, well, here's a, you know, a Latina making fun of indigenous Mexicans and black people. And why are you bringing white people into us? This isn't, this isn't our, this isn't about us. Leave us out of this one. I mean, I hear what you're saying. I mean, the part where you're talking about it being a kind of a zero sum politics does really resonate with me. And I think the question you raise is an important one, which is what are the supposed different interests that a black city council person versus Latino, Latino city council person are perceived to be representing here materially?
Yeah. And that's my issue because it's like, we all want the same things. It doesn't matter what color you are. It's like the one time I'll say that, right? It's like, we want, we want clean streets. We want housing and we want healthcare. We want public banking. We want more public utilities. Like we want clean water. We don't want to be poisoned by our air, by the water we drink, by the food we eat. Like we all want those things. We want schools that are resourced. Like these are all things that everybody wants throughout the city. And to hear, to hear the seats being spoken about, because they say that a lot, like it's a black seat or it's a Latino seat. Again, it's just very dangerous, violent rhetoric that leads to people being killed because that is white supremacy in action. And when you take another step back and look at what these council members have done in quotes for their districts, for their brown districts, as they so proudly want to claim, it's not a whole lot. I can say that as someone who was raised in Nuri Martinez's district, in District Six. There's not a whole lot of opportunity there. She did not do much, has not done much. So I don't even really know like what legs they're standing on, if we assume that they are doing right by the people who look like them.
Yeah, I mean, what it, what it sounds like, I mean, it's difficult. I would love to know. It does sound like maybe there are some legitimate criticisms. Certainly, Mark Ridley Thomas is in the middle of a corruption scandal. This is what Kevin DeLeon was saying about him on the tape. He says, I told my staff, why are we working this hard? Let's do it the way Mark Ridley Thomas does it and just slide and glide at the surface lightly and then give the perception that we do things.
Let's do it the way Mark Ridley Thomas does. Let's slide and glide at the surface lightly and give the perception that we do things.
I mean, I'm sure there, when you look at the homelessness crisis that exists in major American cities across the country, including LA, it's hard to imagine that anyone could be credibly described as doing enough. And when you see one bribery scandal, it wouldn't be surprising to think that people's efforts and interests aren't, aren't being divided and misdirected in ways that aren't actually serving their community. However, when you listen to the tape, what's clear is that the conflict of interest is in that, the idea that there's some like Latino encampment of homeless people and some black encampment of homeless people. And they're like fighting over the money to go help my Latino homeless people versus your black homeless people. They're talking about getting airports in their district and other big financial draws in their district that presumably will give them some degree of power and resources as people who are in control of those districts. Perhaps, John, can you get into that a little bit, the actual meat of this redistricting scandal that they're discussing?
Yeah, so I guess also, and these two things tie together. So I also just wanted to add terms of representation because I do think it ties into these redistricting fights is, I feel like a lot of people really need to look into the vote totals in these local elections and, and which are very low turnout. You know, each of their districts average about 260,000 people and they might win an election with 11,000 votes, right? So when people talk about representation, I think, I think it gets a little muddled because how many people, you know, they might claim to be representing a Latino district or a black district or whatever. But if you look at the actual vote totals, it becomes a little harder to parse that, I think. And then also with, so then with redistricting, you know, there's always conversations about assets, right? So what an asset is, is, you know, it's big, it could be a development or a business or a building, whatever. But those assets don't actually add value to a city, necessarily, to a, to a district, sorry, necessarily. But what they do add value is at least how it's currently done. And, you know, when they're having that conversation about, you know, Marquis Harrison taking the airport from his little bitch brother, Mike Bonin. You know, what, what their, you know, Marquis lives in an incredibly impoverished district relatively. So like, he resides over one. So what these assets really bring to city council members is, is, in one sense, a lot of power for their campaigns. So, right, like, so they can have, let's say you have a football stadium in your district. You can go talk to the owner of that football team and have them do, you know, run partnerships with a nonprofit or with some homelessness initiative, or have them bring other people internationally to come in and start their own nonprofit or donate or donate to your campaign. But so that's really what those assets can mean in a city council, in a city council district. And a lot of the importance does, I think, tie into these elections, which I think does tie into, you know, representation. Like how are they, how are we deciding who represents us? And so a lot of that, a lot of that does come from these assets that they're fighting over in the redistricting process. And so. that they're fighting over, uh, in the, in the redistricting process. And so
So the irony is that by getting this asset in your district, you're frankly, the idea, you're going to be pandering to a constituency that isn't the constituency broadly of your district that you're supposed to be representing. On some level, to get the power, to harness the power of that asset, you have to be beholden to the interest or whatever the asset, but the, the, the football stadium, the airport, the businesses that are operating within the airport, et cetera.
And one of the things that I've only seen, are actually right about yet is the conversation, is the comments that Nury Martinez makes about developing the Sepulveda Basin and, uh, making, making this backroom deal with the mayor and with Stan Crinkie, uh, the owner of, of, Crinkie owns the Rams, correct? I believe it's the Rams, yes. Uh, and another, uh, sports team owner, basically about bringing the Olympics to this area, which I think Rachel might be able to talk about a little more. Uh, but yeah, she's, she's talking about, you know, basically making a deal to, uh, again, take, take public lands away from people, bring private interests to it. Uh, and this is not something, um, you know, people can argue over whether the meeting that, that was had was a violation of the Brown Act or whether there were some illegal redistricting process hands or whatever. I'm sure there's a lot of articles that were written about that. I don't know the legal conclusions that people are going to come to, but what is clear is she's having, she's openly talking about this deal about the Olympics, that she does not want people to know about or hear. And as, as, as far as I know, has not been made public. And, you know, that recording is from 2021. I've never heard a peep about the Olympics coming to, uh, the Sepulveda, the Sepulveda Basin. Yeah. So, so yeah, she's talking again about creating an asset in her district that is, I, I, I wouldn't say there's a, uh, I don't know, I don't know of any activist organization or community group that's, that's arguing for that or desiring that. So, um, yeah, it comes back to representations. Who is, who is asking her to do that?
Right. I mean, it really does have the flavor of the representation intended is I am Latino, that representative is black, that representative white. And if it's good for me, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, which is the exact kind of, um, kind of a shallow, uh, kind of top down representative, uh, identity politics that some people on the left and unfortunately much, in much less constructive manner, some folks on the right have been criticizing that what is good for the goose really isn't necessarily good for their gander. And there's been this kind of performative avocation of, uh, right, representation as a curative in a way that is obviously not the case. And all of these urban centers around the world where so many of our populations are, um, flailing and suffering disproportionately. I, I, so John, I feel like I, I cut you off halfway through your explanation of what was going on there with the redistricting. One of the, one of the topics that was alluded to was whether or not a given district was going to have so-called Bernie bros in it. Um, and whether or not it was going to help them from, from having, uh, by having those kind of progressive voters in their district. Uh, Martinez seemed to suggest that she didn't want them, we didn't want them. And I think that this, this whole episode, but particularly this exchange, I think highlights what a lot of people on the left have been trying to say about how hostile they find Democratic Party environments to actually be and how there is oftentimes, it seems more antagonism toward people with left politics, even in people with moderate right or even actual conservative politics, when you look at how people are trying to run Liz Cheney, for example, uh, for President States of America. So what, what did you make of that exchange?
So that's actually a really interesting, uh, thing to talk about. And I think what's not spoken about a lot too is that, uh, you know, uh, that conversation concerned Gil Sadio's district, CD1, I believe, when they're talking about Highland Park and Eagle Rock. Uh, and so Gil Sadio is this, you know, longtime labor leader he brought, he, he helped, um, he got a lot of fame from helping undocumented immigrants, you know, get driver's licenses here, uh, he helped pass that law. But progressives have seen him in recent years as, you know, not as someone who's become a pro developer. And he's admitted, he's, he said in interviews, he doesn't see a problem with being a pro developer, um, which is another conversation altogether. But he, uh, has been seen now as a career politician who's resting on his laurels and just helping get, uh, large corporations into his district. Um, and so he ran against a progressive city council, a progressive candidate, Unicece Hernandez, who is a community organizer and she, she's a outspoken abolitionist and she's, uh, helped bring past measure J, which takes money away from, or reallocates money for, for, uh, from law enforcement to other, uh, public, public measures. And so she ran against Gil Sadio and Bernie Sanders endorsed Gil Sadio in that race, which actually grew, uh, which really got him a lot of ire, I would say, on like the LA left. Um, and they were confused as to why he endorsed Gil Sadio and his campaign wouldn't make any sort of public statements about it. And actually, you know, if you were driving around LA, uh, there was a big billboard that Sadio had put up that said Bernie Sanders endorses, uh, Gil Sadio. And so he was running, uh, you know, as a less progressive candidate, but also touting the endorsement of Bernie Sanders, which was very interesting. Uh, but yeah, I think, I think a lot of the LA left has, has, you know, and, and, and he's talking about his district, they, you know, places like Highland Park, they might be, you know, a little now more gentrified. Eagle Rock's more gentrified and those people might, uh, for whatever reason, support a more progressive candidate than Gil Sadio. But as, you know, as demonstrated by him losing the election, obviously other people supported the other candidate too. Um, and it just shows that, yeah, he's, they're openly talking about the redistricting process in terms of only how help his election chances is right. Like, like they're not talking about, and I mean, well, they are talking about disenfranchising renters and other parts of the tape, but there, there is no, there's no, uh, consideration for the constituents in that conversation, right? It's just, okay, here are the voting blocks that will go against Gil Sadio perhaps. Here's the ones that won't have like, and they're complaining about it. And so I, I think it really just shows that, you know, he, it's, if, let's say he had won the election, um, he would still have to represent those constituents. And I think, you know, they should, they definitely showed a certain amount of animosity for them. I think, you know, there's like the implication, was, what does he say? That they're so white or it's all white people or something like that?
Yeah. He says, um, I mean, this is quoting from the LA Times article. At one point Martinez warned, uh, Cadio, who is Latino and represents Eastside, an, an Eastside district, that one proposed map could leave him with a higher concentration of white voters and quote burners, younger residents who voted for Senator Bernie Sanders for president. That does not help you, she said. I'm just trying to get a majority of a good district so that you can all get reelected, said Martinez, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah. So I, I think it just shows that he's, and it goes back to my, what I said earlier, he is really hoping on winning, uh, I think with, uh, what they perceive as just people who might not look into the election or, or people who, they're, they're, they're hoping for low turnout and they're hoping that these, uh, people who they've been courting to their neighborhoods and, uh, having businesses and et cetera, and supporting developers. So they're helping to gentrify the neighborhoods and then hoping that those people, uh, don't vote. So it's, it's very interesting. Yeah.
Yeah. It's a, it's a weird dance because I mean, part of the story people didn't really want to talk about, uh, post ASC's initial 2018 win was the composition of the folks who helped her get elected. And she did more strongly in some of these gentrified parts of the Bronx because there were a lot of Bernie bros who got out and door knocked, door knocked for her and turned out in those districts. And it was a kind of a mixed narrative about how it was a kind of a hometown hero story of a, a, a local Bronx Latina who was able to win in a predominantly Latina, Latino district without the added nuance of in a low turnout election, it can actually be the case that still, it's this gentrified population that gets you over the finish line. And that's not, that's neither here nor there. It's just a geographic reality that can kind of make these stories a little less linear than sometimes, um, the way that they're told. Similarly, just to stay on this kind of what's happening with progressives in the middle of all of this conversation. The, the conversation about Nithia Raymond was similarly negatively charged. I see you nodding, Rachel. Do you want to unpack a little bit of what, what happened there?
Yeah. So the context with Councilmember Rahman's race, I think is really important because she, that, that race, um, in 2020 was record turnout for city council races in the city. Um, a ton of people voted, a ton of people door knocked. I mean, it was incredibly historic. So she won with a coalition of working class people, um, families, single people. Like it was just absolutely every demographic that you can imagine turned out to vote for Nithia. I worked for Nithia, need to state that. I'm very proud that she won. Um, and Nury Martinez hated that and a lot of council members really resented that, um, because it wasn't just about winning an election for Nithia or people like Unicece who is taking over Gil Sadio's seat. It's about building power and it's about building community. Um, and that threatens the very nature of the city council. As John was saying, that a lot of these folks are in their seats because of low turnout. They don't want people to pay attention. They don't want people to vote. Um, it, it's better for them if you don't pay attention and you don't vote because they can just skate by. So seeing Nithia's win really threatened all of city council. We've already seen CP1 flip. We're hoping, um, in this election cycle for 11 and 13 to also flip to more progressive people. Erin Darling and Hugo Soto Martinez respectively. Um, and the way that they were talking about Nithia Ramia's, Nithia Rahman's district in this tape was essentially saying that they wanted to break up the strong block of renters that her district, District Four, used to have. Um, and they, they wanted to break up that renter power to quote, keep her on the fence. And Nury Martinez says that she doesn't care to help Nithia win again. I think she says like very dismissively, she can figure it out, um, about Nithia's reelection chances. Um, so I think we, we saw many things here. The disdain for Nithia Rahman, that I think many people who watch city council meetings, participate in local politics could tell what's going on, but of course didn't have any evidence of, um, now we do. But also the disdain for renters, um, and people who don't own land. No one on our city council is a renter, um, which is horrible. Talk about representation. We don't have any as renters in the city on city council. Um, so they deliberately were trying to, um, kneecap the power of renters, um, in District Four, which they did. They chopped, sliced and diced the district, as they said, um, and gave her a little bit more of the valley, took away part of her renter block. Um, and I think that's something that should unite all of us as activists and organizers. A lot of us are renters. There's more renters than there are landlords here in the city. Um, so it was very, it was just very gross to kind of be vindicated in that way. Like, oh yeah, no, they actually do hate renters. And they clearly don't like working with Nithia. Um, and it was just unfortunate, but I think, you know, like I said, I think it's just fire for me as a renter, um, to try to put people in office that will protect renters rights. But also it's like clearly in their policies, um, they don't care about renters. So I think that's also an interesting part of this conversation is like, they're not protecting renters because they're not renters, but also because they clearly can't stand us. So I think it's the policies that ended up coming out of this conversation, but also probably hundreds of thousands of conversations just like them are borne out in policy. You can tell who the city is favoring and who they care about by their policies. And this was just a very gross peek behind that curtain.
Yeah. The headline here, you know, all caps, the contempt that is shown for any number of groups in the course of this phone, uh, of this recording is really extraordinary. I mean, this is again, I think from an LA Times, uh, write-up. Um, Martinez then noted that Rahman, uh, Rahman went to play for, um, K-Town, but said that that would not happen because she didn't want, quote, beef with Ridley Thomas. Martinez said that given, giving Rahman would, that giving Rahman what could amount to a safer council district would not be good for Martinez and her allies. So the implication there is also that, you know, we, we've been having this conversation on the left about to what extent people are making fair criticisms of progressives who've been elected at various levels of government. How much should we see them as vulnerable and so embattled that we can't expect them to speak out for us? And this does seem to be a recognition from the people who are opposed to these politicians that, you know, weakening them on this very basic level in terms of, uh, these redistricting fights. And we saw this happen to ASC as well, will also affect the language that they use, the things they fight for and the extent to which they might even call out their fellow city council members for wrongdoing, which is incredibly pernicious. Yeah. All right. So we, uh, have gone through some of the progressive things. I'm sorry. I, I just want to make sure I didn't cut you off just there at the end, Rachel.
No, no, no. I wasn't sure if John wanted to say something.
Well, uh, Rachel and I have spoken about this before, but, um, there was a really good article written, actually in the LA Times, uh, by Fidel Martinez, uh, renters specifically in, uh, Nury Martinez's district. And he was talking about how, you know, over 60, I think it was 65% of them are Latino. And so, you know, she's both claiming to represent, and that, that's, I think, what, what gets lost is, you know, we alluded to earlier is who, you know, they can say that they're representing their Latino constituents, but how real is that actually? What is the actual truth of that? And so if Nury Martinez is saying that she's representing Latino constituents and over 65% of them are renters and she just shows this clear disdain for them, how much is that really, how much truth is there behind those sorts of statements? Or is it, you know, maybe they're, it's, it's this narrative that they come up with to sort of insulate themselves from, to sit, you know, to protect their decision-making and say, well, you know, if you criticize us, then we're going to say that these decisions were made for our Latino constituents. So how you, how dare you criticize that? Um, but yeah, so.
Yeah. What, I mean, what's so kind of interesting about this too, is that, I mean, for all of the demographics, demographics are destiny conversations that have been happening over the last 15 years, the Democratic Party kind of, um, crossed its fingers and hoped that all of its electoral problems were going to be resolved by the growing Latino population. And all of the hand wringing that's happening now when they realize they actually have to, you know, make a bid for people's votes instead of just presuming that because they have a sprinkle of melanin in them, that they're magically going to vote for Democrats forever. Um, you know, it's, it's interesting to look at a situation like this where, I mean, I just did a quick Google, black people are only 7.8% of LA's population, white is 48.93, which is kind of higher than I thought it was going to be. Asian is 11.78 and other race is 22.68. So I don't know if they're like separating out black Latinos, white Latinos, other race. I don't, I'm looking for a better, um, breakdown that has people who identify, okay. Uh, Hispanic or Latino of any race, 47.5%. Non-Hispanic whites is only 29.4%. Okay. That makes more sense. And then African American, uh, 9.8%. That being the case, if, it, it seems like the numbers are already going to be on Martinez's side with respect to the district's point blank period. So what are we really talking about when we're talking about, this is a black district, this is a Latino district, I don't have enough power. I mean, if it, it, it feel, it feels like the kind of conversation you might expect, and again, not endorse, but you might expect from say a shrinking black population who's trying to hold on, not the insurgent Latino population who I would assume has a demographic advantage in some of these, um, districts. Why are they not apparently able to get people to turn out? And does, does this have to do with the fact that there's a lot of navel gazing at where the airport's going to land instead of actually delivering on the needs of Latinos that are living in these districts?
Yeah. I think it's exactly that. They haven't done anything for us. Um, something I talk a lot about, uh, I'm sixth generation Angelino, sixth generation Valley girl. We have been here forever before it was LA, before it was the Valley. So we have seen our communities continue to dilapidate regardless of who is in these seats. It doesn't matter what color they are. And we've had decades now of Latinx representation on city council in the districts that I grew up in, that my mom grew up in. And it seems as though our material conditions have not improved. And it seems as though the city has continued to descend, um, into, yeah, just dilapidation in many ways. Um, and I think it also needs to be said that our black population has shrunk significantly over the last couple of decades. I don't want to forget that either. Um, because anti-blackness is real throughout all of the policies. Um, and anti-poor sentiment is very evident in city council policies. Um, why would I vote for someone that isn't actually going to change the way that my day-to-day life is? Um, and it's particularly difficult when we organize around local politics because our city council impacts our daily lives way more than who is president, way more than higher offices. These people impact our lives way more. The potholes on the street, the air that we breathe, the schools that we go to. Um, so if those folks are not helping our kids, helping our neighbors, why would I turn out to vote for you? And I think it's because they're more worried about navel gazing, as you said. But also there's a clear history of corruption on LA city council. These folks are trying to become lobbyists. They're trying to make backdoor deals. They're trying to get themselves paid. That's what it seems like to me. And they just want to feel powerful in their own right. Um, so it's just gross on every level because you would hope that if you're seeking public office, you're doing it to better the city that you live in. Um, and that's not the case that I have seen from any of these. Um, and that's not the case that I have seen from any of these people.
Yeah. I mean, I, yeah, go ahead, John. Sorry.
Well, I would say that that sentiment is even reflected, so in every, I would say every political race happening now on the LA city level, you know, politicians, you know, like, like Rick Caruso's running for mayor, he's running, I would say, LA Times says he's a centrist, I would say he's a conservative. Um, even the, even the candidates with the most conservative policies, uh, Sam Yarvery, I would say has a conservative platform. They're running as insurgent, their messaging is insurgent progressivism, right? Like, so Rick Caruso is running a campaign of saying like he's going to come in and change the city because city council is so corrupt, right? And that's what Ken Mahida, um, obviously his policies, the platform very different than someone like Rick Caruso's, but he's also running on a, a campaign of radical transparency and saying that the city has not worked for its people. There are, I would say virtually no races, uh, maybe Paul Carrats for City Controller, he's running a pretty, I would say, milquetoast campaign. But there are virtually no races that I think people are talking about where the candidate is running on, you know, a platform of experience or competency or, you know, a lot of, a lot of more, uh, traditional races you would see in Democrat versus Republican. Even, even the, the candidates, you know, who, whose interests do align with, with homeowners and with the same developers that these city councils are talking about, those candidates are running with the messaging of, of the city, the city doesn't serve its people, right? They're, they're often, they're always criticizing city council. They're criticizing the lack of services. They're criticizing, uh, just all, all of, all of what Rachel was just talking about, the lack of improvement. And so that's, you know, that messaging hits people, it seems like in LA. No matter what your platform is, that's the messaging you're going to use and that's because of how people perceive city council.
Yeah. And it's, the problem is that it's not an unfair criticism and it's the same kind of messaging that you're seeing on a national basis. I mean, I'm, I'm seeing the right wing, I shouldn't say that, I see conservative news outlets really eating this story up, chewing it over because, look, the, the story nationally since at least the eighties has been Republicans making government ineffective, cutting it, making it worse, and then running on government doesn't work. And here we have an instance in all of these liberal bastions, which Republicans have been making this argument for a while, all these liberal, in all these liberal bastions where they can't blame conservatives. There is now all this corruption and, um, lack of effective policymaking and material benefit for the people in the cities. And so people on the right and the left, everyone can kind of mold themselves, at least in a kind of faux populism and make a legitimate claim that they are going to drain the swamp, as it were. And now the populations are left in this, in this situation where they're trying to have to discern who's the real McCoy and who isn't. So, I mean, I want to ask you both, what do you think is the way out of this and what are the next steps for Angelinos as they surveil this landscape and try to figure out who to trust and what should happen next to the city council?
I mean, big picture is, uh, dismantle capitalism, right? Because power, power and money breed abuse. Just that. Power and money breed abuse and that's what we're going to see over and over and over again. Um, it's unfortunate, but it is true. Um, but before we get to that step, I think just continuing to try and identify, um, normal, real people who are now career politicians, people who are your neighbors, people in your community orgs that care about the city deeply and struggle in the city too. I think that that's something that has always helped me identify with candidates is understanding my struggle as someone with student loan debt, medical debt, a renter, um, all of these things. You can, the closer you are to the problem, the hopefully easier you can solve it. And so just putting like normal average people into our city council, doubling, tripling the size of our city council here in LA, they have way too much power. 15 people is not enough for a city of four million people.
That was, Nithia, Nithia put that on the agenda, right? She was doing that?
Um, to, uh, it's, 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 it does actually a little bit more than that in the language, both forming a committee to explore, uh, these things, but essentially she's looking at complete lobbying reform, which if you follow, um, it's probably a little bit in the weeds, but if, if you follow neighborhood councils in LA, that's something that people have been asking for, for a long time, uh, in terms of, you know, lobbyists will come to these meetings and they'll say, they'll pretend to be a community member or say they have, they, you know, oh, I support this building because, you know, my neighborhood just, and that's if they're lobbyists. So, um, that was something that's been explored. Um, that's in Rahman's draft motion about identifying lobbyists and reform. And then, uh, it also talks about, uh, taking land use discretion away from city council members. So, you know, city council has, uh, the Plum Committee, which the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, which is very, very powerful. And it's sort of what got former council member, uh, Jose Luisar in trouble because he was, you know, taking bribes from, uh, developers. And so that's, that's been something that, and I think Rahman said it, uh, to be in an interview, that, you know, is a recipe for corruption. Um, so she wants to, uh, take land use discretionary for them. And then it's actually, I believe in council member, uh, Mitchell Farrell's motion that, that forms the committee to put a ballot measure in 2024 to expand city council. Um, and this is something that, again, I think a lot of people have been asking for, for years and it, it took some, I think, massive scandal that puts the spotlight nationally on city council to actually make them do it. And that's, that's something that, uh, isn't talked about either is, you know, I would say that council members, uh, Bonin and Rahman have had some fairly progressive, uh, motions that they wanted to put on their agenda over the past year. You know, uh, Nithia wanted to, uh, uh, have this big landlord harassment ordinance and it was gutted, um, in the city council committee to be fairly toothless and hard to enforce when a landlord's harassing tenants, but it was one of her big policy platforms which she ran. And, um, you know, one of the reasons all this stuff happened is because of Nuri Martinez refusing to, as city council president, agendize a lot of these things that, um, the more progressive, you would say, members had wanted to put on the agenda, exploring committees and pass, but those things never got off the ground because of Nuri Martinez. And so the hope now is that, I guess, amongst progressives, that if you have, uh, another, another person as city council president, you know, they've, they've put, um, Paul Krikorian in charge, who I wouldn't say is really perceived as a progressive necessarily, but I guess the, the notion is that he would, because of this, work with people to actually agendize their motions, not be incredibly retaliatory.
A lot of people are pushing for that. I mean, because so much of the conversation is about, are these people going to resign? You know, is there, is this leverage being used to actually make policy changes as opposed to just kind of personnel changes?
That's a, that's a really, yeah, there's, I would say that there's definitely a pretty big split on that, uh, as far as I know, you know, but maybe I'm in a bubble, you know, there's people, you know, BLM is right now camped outside of Kevin Delly Allen's house, I believe, still, um, calling for his resignation. A lot of different community groups have demanded from, uh, you know, especially from the progressive council members that they stop attending these meetings so there's no quorum. So the meetings just won't be, won't be held. Um, I believe Mike Bonin, Bonin argued that if they don't have the meetings, they can't continue to protect renters and expand the COVID eviction protections till, uh, or extend them, sorry. Um, so the, you know, his argument was that there are things to be, to vote on to help continue to protect people in the city. Obviously there are, are a lot of people who really disagree with that and they think that until there are resignations that, uh, the progressives owe it, uh, to that, to community, the community to not have means at all. Um, so there's definitely a split mind on that, of Rachel, let's speak on that more, but.
I don't think there should be any means at all. That's my opinion.
Hmm. Well, look, I, I really appreciate both of you coming and spending this time to get into the weeds with me here. I, I am curious, just one last question before we go, whether there's some aspect of what got captured on this recording that you think hasn't gotten enough airtime?
Hmm. I would prop, I would love to see more, um, outlets teasing out all of the various anti XYZ, all of the hatred toward marginalized groups, like pinpointing how that's been borne out in policy. Because I think that's what's most important. It would have been one thing if like all of that was said and we had this like progressive utopia in Los Angeles where everybody had a house and a job and everyone was well taken care of. Um, but they clearly govern the way that they speak, um, behind closed doors. And I would love to see more coverage of, of that being linked together.
Hmm. John?
Yeah. I, I would agree with, uh, Rachel definitely. Um, and also I would say that something that doesn't really, you know, hasn't, you know, we had knock, I think, cover it a lot, but, um, doesn't really get covered in other publications is that, you know, right after they had another meeting to, uh, you know, supposedly pass some progressive legislation, talk about new council president, they immediately passed more anti-encampment sites, uh, in Heatherhead's district. And they were talking about more of these, um, you know, these are, these are anti-encampment zones where if you're, if you're there, um, legally they don't have to, uh, offer you housing or shelter after a 14-day period. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a federal lawsuit against it going on right now, um, this 418, uh, I think this, this 418 ordinance, because again, like it can be enforced without any offers of housing or shelter. So right after their, um, so I, I don't think there's a lot of connection between that, that ordinance, which was heavily pushed by the council members on the tape, um, and their other views against, um, renters and poor people. Secondly, I, I did want to, uh, plug my own reporting a little bit because no one else has done it, is, um, there's a tape in September, 2022, uh, that we were reporting on. Uh, so there's, you know, there's at least a year that elapsed between these two recordings, which is obviously very interesting. I don't know, you know, who knows how many other recordings were taken. Um, but as part of that recording, uh, Ron Herrera, the president of the LA Federation, was speaking to a former staff member of Mitchell Farrell, who, you know, has been using this scandal to sort of appear to be, uh, somewhat presidential. He's been having his own press conferences, uh, to talk about how he's helping to reform city council and he's calling for everyone to resign. Um, but his former staffer was on the tape with Ron Herrera, uh, speaking to Herrera about, uh, just sort of, and it's something that I think maybe, you know, some people are, are in political circles, they'll be like, and that's what a lot of these tapes will be like, oh yeah, we all know that, but I don't think the public does. And so he's talking to a former O'Farrell staffer about sort of rigging and buying off, uh, endorsements from the Democratic Party, uh, clubs in LA. And so she's speaking openly about, you know, strategizing with him against, uh, the candidate that Rachel was speaking about, Hugo Soto Martinez, who's running against O'Farrell. Um, but it's beyond that, it's they're, they're just openly talking about how labor and sort of, uh, California Democratic Club, uh, sort of, I don't know how to describe them, lackeys or delegates or whatever, uh, are just sort of organizing to sort of rig endorsements. Um, and I haven't seen that reported outside of, uh, what we've done in Doc. So I think that that's something also that, um, because again, a lot of this is about reputation, it's about, or lack of, it's about redistricting, but it's also about these people who are extremely nervous about their own incumbents, like their own chances to stay in office and how could they can, uh, make sure that that proceeds the way they want to.
Well, John, that's a great moment for us to end and for you to tell our listeners where they can find your reporting and you on the internet.
Uh, yeah, I'm on, uh, Twitter, I post a lot, at, um, at Johnny Pelts. Uh, and yeah, I write an edit for KnockLA, which is knock, like knocking on a door dot LA. And we, you know, we report a lot about, uh, tenants' rights, homelessness. Uh, we have an amazing reporter, Reese Castle, who, you know, reports a lot on the sheriff's department, uh, abuse there. Um, we report, I think, a lot of stories that are from the ground up that a lot of other outlets don't cover. Um, and yeah, check us out online.
Thank you for that, John. And Rachel, where can people find you and your work on the internet?
Yes. Um, also on Twitter sadly, um, my handle is just Rachel underscore Reyes, my first and last name. And I don't have anything else to plug, so I will co-sign, uh, KnockLA. Please check it out. Um, you all do great work there, John, really proud to know you. And also No Olympics LA. If you're mad about Nuri Martinez's backdoor deals and selling the valley out to the Olympics, definitely organize with No Olympics. They're doing really great work here.
Thank you guys so much for, for joining me today. To the listeners, you know, this is a podcast that come out, comes out twice a week. To listen to an additional Bad Faith episode every week on Mondays, you can subscribe at patreon.com/badfaithpodcast. Really appreciate your support. I'll see you later tonight on Colin. And as always, take care of yourself and keep the faith. Hey YouTube, thanks for watching. Just a reminder that this is a podcast. You can catch an extra premium episode every Monday for $5 a month at patreon.com/badfaithpodcast. That's patreon.com/badfaithpodcast for $5 a month, an extra episode every week. Additionally, please do consider liking this video, subscribing to this channel. It helps us out. It helps independent media beat the algorithm. We appreciate you and as always, keep the faith.